The following is a production of Cary TV, the town of Cary's government access channel.
Call to order the March 5th meeting of the Cary Town Council. And at this time, I'd ask you to join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're now agenda item 1.2, which is the adoption of our agenda. Due to inclement weather on February 26, 2015, the following owner-initiated annexations, public hearings are being carried over to tonight's meeting. They are the Stitt Property LLC, Alma M. Stitt, Ross E. Stitt Jr., Annexation 14A14; Kay Hovnan at Indian Wells LLC, Annexation 14A19; owner-initiated annexation petition, Brian G. Purse, Annexation 14A15; owner-initiated annexation petition, Highcroft Investors, 14A22. Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
No.
Second?
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. That takes us to the public hearings. Before we get started and before I explain the public hearings, I do want to point out we have two different, totally different meetings tonight. We're going to start off with public hearings, just like at a regularly scheduled council meeting, which anyone may speak without having been sworn in or anything. And after we finish those public hearings, we'll move into the quasi-judicial process. And at that time, to speak at those public hearings, you have to be sworn in. And I'll remind you again when we get to those public hearings. So now's the time for public hearings. We've included instructions for peaking, speaking at this forum on the printed agenda. If you'd like to speak, please take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public hearing speakers have five minutes for their comments. I'll have to enforce the five-minute time limit to be fair to all of our speakers. There's a timer located on the speaker's podium. When the green light turns yellow, that means you have 30 seconds remaining. And when the time expires, the light will change to a flashing red. And at that time, I'll interrupt you and ask you to immediately conclude your comments, trying to be, again, fair to all of our speakers. And I thank all of our speakers in advance for adhering to our five-minute time limit. We also ask that groups allow a spokesperson on the behalf of that group to reduce repetitive comments. I thank everyone in the audience for respecting that this is a business meeting. Please do not applaud, make remarks from your seats or anything else that might distract from our meeting. Our first public hearing is for owner-initiated Annexation 14A14. That's the Stitt property. Mr. Barker of our staff will present the item. We're going to open the public hearing, and council may take action on this annexation petition. Mr. Barker?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. This request for annexation of approximately 54.23 acres located along Green Hope School Road and Sears Farm Road, and also includes 3.73 acres of right-of-way. Property is in Cary's ETJ and is currently zoned transitional residential conditional use. Their request is associated with two subdivisions, Stitt North, which is approximately, was a total of 16 lots, and Stitt South, which is a total of 142 lots. Following the public hearing, council may take action on this annexation. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Barker. Now's the time for the public hearing for 14A14, and I would invite the first speaker forward to the podium at this time. Anyone for this public hearing? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask council members for questions or comments or a motion.
Make a motion to approve Annexation 14A14?
There's a motion?
A second.
And a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Barker. We now --
Sure.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We now have the public hearing 1.3B for the owner-initiated annexation petition 14A19 in Indian Wells. And Mr. Barker, once again, of our staff will introduce this item, and council will not take action at this time, but will take action on this item as it is related to the Wells, Indian Wells subdivision. Mr. Barker?
Yes, this annexation is for multiple properties located on the north and south side of Indian Wells Road. The total acreage is approximately 34.5 acres and with .86 acres of right-of-way. Property is in Cary's ETJ and is zoned residential eight conditional use. It's associated with the subdivision plan, as the mayor mentioned, that is contained, contains 70 lots. And as the mayor stated this, after the public hearing, action will be delayed until the item on the quasi-judicial hearing.
Okay, very good. Now's the time for the public hearing for 14A19 annexation, and I would invite the first speaker to the podium at this time. Anyone for this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and thank Mr. Barker for that item. And we move to our next public hearing, which is the owner-initiated annexation petition 14A15. And Mr. Barker, once again, will present the item. We'll open the public hearing, and we will not take action on this item this evening. Mr. Barker?
Yes, this annexation is approximately for 73.5 acres located at 1116 White Oak Church Road. It also includes .1 acre, 18 acres of right-of-way. The portion of property in Wake County is currently zoned Wake County Residential 40, and the portion in Chatham County is zoned Residential 1. The request is associated with an annex rezoning, 14REZ32, the Purse property, and the public hearing for this was held on January 28. Following the public hearing, as mayor has mentioned, no action is needed on this tonight. It would be placed on a future item, agenda item, associated with zoning case.
Okay, very good. Now's the time for the public hearing for 14A15, the Purse property, and I would invite the first speaker to the podium. Anyone for this public hearing? I see no one. We'll close the public hearing, and we'll move to our next public hearing. Our last public hearing is the owner-initiated Annexation 14A22, Highcroft Investors, and Mr. Barker will once again introduce this item. Mr. Barker?
Yes, this last annexation is approximately 3.15 acres located along Wakena Road. Property is in Cary's ETJ and is zoned residential 40. The request is associated with a subdivision plan, or site plan, 14SP074, which proposes utilities to serve these three lots, and staff recommends approval of the annexation following the public hearing.
Okay. Now's the time for the public hearing, 14A22, Highcroft Investors, and I would invite the first speaker forward at this time. Anyone for this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and open it to council members for questions, comments, or a motion.
Make a --
Go ahead.
Make a motion to approve Annexation 14A22?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Barker.
Thank you.
Well done.
Oh, thank you.
We now move to the quasi-judicial public hearings. Our first quasi-judicial public hearing is for Indian Wells subdivision. As shown on the agenda, there are two parts to this hearing, an owner-initiated annexation petition and a subdivision plan. When we are ready to vote, we need to vote on the owner-initiated annexation first, followed by the subdivision plan. An overview of the hearing procedures and detailed rules are attached to the printed agenda. The guidelines for speaking at a quasi-judicial hearing are different than the public hearings we have, we just held. These guidelines are found on the printed agenda under item 2. All speakers who want to speak during this public hearing must be administered an oath by Mrs. Johnson, who is to my right. And we're going to pause just a moment to allow those individuals who would like to speak at the public hearing to approach Mrs. Johnson and receive their oaths, and council will pause from doing anything until that has been completed. Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask council members if they've had any site visits, second party communication, financial relationships, specialized knowledge, or close relationship that can affect a person to disclose, starting on my left with Mr. Yerha.
I have not.
Ms. Bush?
I just want to make the comment that we've talked about a lot of these properties many times before, so I haven't had any specific conversations about what's being discussed here, but we have talked about these.
Do you think it'll impact your decision in any way?
I do not.
Okay. Ms. France?
No.
I have not?
I have not.
Ms. Smith?
I haven't, besides what Lori talked about.
Okay. Will it impact your decision in any way?
Probably. I mean, I don't know. I mean, I don't know, because I don't really know what we're talking about here today.
Okay.
So, I mean, I definitely have had concerns in this area.
Okay, so you've heard from the council members, and I'd invite anyone to the podium who's been sworn in to speak if you have an objection to a council member's participation in this hearing. Okay? I see no one, so we'll open the quasi-judicial public hearing, and Mr. Hales of our staff will begin this hearing. Mr. Hales?
Thank you, council. As you've indicated, the next item on tonight's agenda is a request by Kay Hovnanian Homes at Indian Wells LLC for an annexation and subdivision plan approval located at the terminus of Indian Wells Road. This plan does include a few minor modifications to the town's development standards, which we'll go into detail later. The project is, constitutes a 35-acre assemblage of several properties located just west of North Carolina Highway 55. The property is located in Cary's ETJ, but not within the town limits. Therefore, Annexation 14A19, which you guys just discussed, will need to be approved prior to approval of the site plan, subdivision plan. The property is surrounded on residential, by residential uses on three sides, the west, east, and south. To the north is a town-owned property, a future park site, as well as the Crosspoint Church properties. Indian Wells is identified on the portion where this property is located as a local street. There are no other thoroughfares and collectors existing adjacent to the property. However, a portion of the future Highcroft Drive collector does run north-south across the western portion of the property. The Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Facilities Master Plan does identify a couple of improvements that would impact this site. The first being, and the green dash line is a proposed greenway corridor that runs through Cameron Pond, across the stream buffer, and connects out to NC 55 in its ultimate condition. The blue dash line you see on this plan crossing the portion of the property is a street-side trail, which will be located on the eastern side of the future Highcroft Drive collector. There are a couple of stream buffers which impact development of this property. There are two USGS indicated streams that run along, one runs along the southern property boundary, and the other runs diagonally across the western portion of the property. The existing conditions, as the property sits today, this aerial photo is two years old, and it shows houses. These were old, large lot residence, residential properties. However, those houses have been removed. So as it sits today, it is a mixture of forest cover and open grassy fields. As you can see here, these are the former, some of the agricultural portions of the site, as well as some of the old home sites that have been cleared and stabilized. So the proposed subdivision plan before you this evening is a request for development of approximately, of 70 detached residential lots. Access would be provided via the existing Indian Wells Road. Also includes construction of a portion of Highcroft Drive along the western portion of the property, which we discussed earlier. The developer will be constructing a portion of the greenway on the property, as well as the multi-use trail along Highcroft Drive and a private trail connection from the northern end of the subject property to the greenway corridor as it crosses the town's park property and the Crosspoint Church property. United States Postal Service has identified six locations scattered around the site for 13 box CBUs to provide mail delivery to the site. Stormwater management is being achieved through the use of three stormwater detention wet ponds. Buffering for the site consists of a 20-foot type B perimeter buffer, consistent with the type 2 use to other type 2 uses, as well as a 30-foot type A streetscape along future Highcroft Drive, which has a collector. Tree survey performed for the site did identify seven champion trees across the site. Six of those trees are being retained. We'll get into a little bit more detail on that later, as they are requesting three minor modification requests, one of which has to do with the champion trees. The first request is a modified or a partial payment in lieu for a portion of Highcroft Drive. Section 8.1.3 of the LDO requires that developers install curb and gutter and to pay all streets adjoining their property. Typically, those improvements are required to be constructed to the property line or as close to the property line as feasible. In this request, the developer is constructing the majority of Highcroft Drive, including the street-side trail. However, they are requesting, except the town's acceptance of a $516,705.70 payment in lieu for approximately 145-foot section of Highcroft Drive as it approaches the northern property line. And in this slide, it's the portion that is grayed out within the stream buffer. The second request the developer is making this evening is a modification to section 7.2.8A of the LDO, which regulates the use of hardscape edges and stormwater BMPs to limit their aesthetic impacts on the community. The applicant is requesting to provide a modular keystone retaining wall to define the southeastern eastern edge of wet pond number three. Now, you'll notice on the slide, it's labeled as BMP number two. Wet pond number three, as is labeled in the title, is what is called on the actual subdivision plan itself. There's just a little mix-up in the exhibit. Final request, or third request, is a request to remove and replace a champion tree. Section 7.25, 2.5 of the LDO provides protection for large diameter trees located on developing sites. As mentioned earlier, the arborist that did the tree survey and reviewed the tree survey did identify seven champion trees on this site. Of those seven, the applicant is proposing to retain six of them. However, there is one located at the northern cul-de-sac. There's located within the footprint of the cul-de-sac itself, and they're requesting to remove that and replace it. That tree, identified as tree number 35 in the tree report, is a 33-inch twin sweetgum, and the LDO does classify that as tier 2, 3 priority for preservation, which is the next-to-lowest category above preservation listed in the LDO. That concludes staff's initial presentation. I'll now turn it over to the applicant to present testimony in support of their application, and then following that and the other speakers, staff will be back to provide some professional observations on their requests. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd invite the applicant's attorney to present arguments and evidence in support of the application by addressing the applicable approval criteria.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jason Barron with Morningstar Law Group here on behalf of the applicant Kay Hovnanian Homes. Here with me tonight is Mr. Kirk Berger, the division president of Kay Hov. Also, Mr. Landon Lovelace of Bowler Engineering. He's the civil engineer who has prepared these plans and can speak intelligently about them. Also here is Deborah Shirley with SNEC. She's the wetlands consultant that worked with the town, as well as the Army Corps of Engineers, with respect to the crossing that ultimately prevented us from being able to finish constructing Highcroft and necessitated requesting the first minor modification, which I'll talk about momentarily. And then finally, Ms. Jessica McClure with Ramey Kempin Associates is our traffic engineer. We will be as quick as we possibly can, again, recognizing that this is an evidentiary hearing. We have made a slight modification to how we present testimony, and I'll touch on that momentarily. As Kevin indicated, it's a subdivision plan for 70 homes on 35 lots, so roughly two units to the acre. It's a low-density subdivision. I want to, I want to hit on three points with respect to this particular proposal. The first relates to the fee in lieu. We're asking for a minor modification because it is a required improvement. However, it's really a hardship situation for us, and we're not arguing that a variance is before you all. It's really a minor modification because that's the way this process works. But ultimately, in consultation with the, with the town, we met, representatives of the applicant, met with the Army Corps of Engineers to, to have that crossing occur. They built their plans around that crossing occurring, and were actually, had built into their budget the fact that they were going to construct the crossing as part of this plan. Attended a meeting with the Army Corps of Engineers, at which members of our team, as well as the town, were told by the Army Corps of Engineers that that crossing was not going to happen. That apparently, in their, in their minds, it's a road to nowhere. And, and there were representatives of the town that were at that meeting as well. So that's essentially why we're here tonight, is because we were told, you can't cross it. So now we need a minor modification in order to allow us to pay the town a fee in lieu for that portion of the improvement. We are constructing the onsite portion of Highcroft that doesn't require the crossing. But ultimately, with respect to crossing, the Corps of Engineers said, no. The second relates to the champion tree removal. It's a sweetgum. And then, third, with respect to traffic, with respect to traffic improvements, as you all, as the council is aware, this property was the subject of two different rezoning cases. They were initiated, and one was completed by another developer. There were conversations that occurred, and I think Council, Councilor Bush and Council Robinson referred to that, generally speaking. Conversations related to the fact that there were other cases going on during that process that were required to make traffic improvements associated with those zoning cases, and that these, these properties were not required to do the same. My clients acquired the property after those conversations had occurred, and, and my clients heard you loud and clear. And so as part of this process, they engaged Ramey Kempin Associates and studied traffic in the area, and have offered a condition that we will get into towards the end of the presentation, but offered a condition to construct a 100-foot eastbound right-turn lane on Indian Wells, along with 100-foot taper. So essentially, 100-foot of storage for heading, if you're heading south on 55, there's storage now to do that, so you can get those people who want to travel south out of the, the current situation that they're in. So, again, our, our engineers and experts will get into that in a little bit more detail at that time. Finally, in, in the, an attempt to be a little bit more brief in how we present the testimony, you're going to hear testimony from our experts with respect to the minor modifications, as well as finding number six, which is the traffic find. With respect to findings number one through five, Mr. Lovelace is going to refer to the applicant's statement contained in the staff report and swear that he prepared that statement. And so he's here to answer any questions related to it, but for purposes of providing oral testimony tonight, he's not going to run through those things. Those, it is all laid out verbatim in the staff report. So I consulted with the town attorney, as well as Mr. Silverstein, and they have no objection to us handling it that way. So with that, I will call our first witness, Mr. Landon Lovelace of Bowler Engineering.
Thank you, Jason. Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Landon Lovelace. I work at Bowler Engineering and was the lead design and project manager for, for this project. I've been an engineer for 15 years, with the last 11 years being here in the Triangle. I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of North Carolina, and I've worked on a multitude of residential developments across the Triangle, including many in Cary. I'm a graduate of Michigan State University with a degree in civil engineering. I'll briefly run through, switch mics so I can get to the mouse. I'll briefly run through some of the planning features without regurgitating some of the surrounding uses that Kevin already mentioned. As Kevin did mention, we've got a 20-foot type B perimeter buffer as part of the zoning conditions. The buffers around the western edges of the property are undisturbed. We've also got a 30-foot type A streetscape buffer along Highcroft Drive. We do provide the 100-foot stream buffers along both unnamed tributaries to Panther Creek that affect the site, but there's, there's one here, and then one along the southern property line. We also provide open space well in excess of what is required by the land development As Kevin mentioned, the, the site is bounded on three sides by existing single-family residential, some larger lots, some existing smaller lot with Cameron Pond, as well as a future Town of Cary Park parcel. The section of Highcroft Drive that we're constructing is approximately 350 feet through the project, with a fee in lieu being proposed for the remaining 150-foot portion that cannot be built at this time. And we'll discuss those improvements in greater detail shortly. Once the Highcroft corridor is completed, this is an important north-south collector in northwest Cary. As depicted on the Parks and Rec Master Plan, as Kevin mentioned, the development also proposes a 10-foot wide meandered street-side trail, which is also along the eastern side of Highcroft. We're also proposing plus or minus 650 feet of 10-foot public greenway trail in accordance with the Parks and Rec Master Plan, and about 350 feet of a private 6-foot wide spur trail that will ultimately connect up with the greenway, as well as the town's park parcel. As indicated on the proposed plan and the other materials submitted, the improvements have been designed in compliance with the requirements of the town's land development ordinance, including the development and design standards of chapters 7 and 8, as well as the dedication and improvements required in chapter 8. Kevin, the, the next exhibit that's got the offsite improvements, here we go. Thank you. Finally, we just wanted to walk through some of the additional public improvements that are required for this site, that also benefit development in the overall area. For this project, we're proposing to extend just over 1,300 feet of an 8-inch waterline up Wakena Road and along Indian Wells, as well as throughout the subdivision, as well as a 12-inch waterline and a 12-inch reclaimed waterline in the portion of Highcroft that's being constructed. We're also constructing two sewer outfalls, which have been located and designed, not only to serve this site, to be, but also to be of the best potential for future development. So we located the outfall on the western portion of the site, towards the northern part of the site, so it can serve future, the future undeveloped parcel to the north, as well as the town park parcel. We've also, we've also got an outfall on the eastern side of the site that can serve, that will serve future development on the Crosspoint Church parcel, as well as parcels on the northern side of Indian Wells Road. It should also be noted that It should also be noted that these improvements, including Highcroft Drive, the waterline and the sewer outfalls, are required to serve this development, but they also help to promote future development in this area by laying the foundation and infrastructure for other developments to use. I'll now touch on the minor modification. As Kevin and Jason have indicated, the plan includes three requests for minor modifications. First, the applicant has asked the town to accept a payment in lieu in the amount of $516,705,070 in lieu of construction of approximately 150 feet of the full section of Highcroft Drive. The developers proposing the fee in lieu of construction per the town's land development ordinance, Section 8.1.5a2, which requires town council approval for fee-in-lie requests in excess of $100,000, as long as the improvements are not necessary or desirable at the time but will be needed in the future. The improvements required for this project would not extend to any existing portion of Highcroft Drive, as there are non-constructed adjacent to this project and are therefore not desirable or necessary at this time. In addition, the proposed development has provided full design for the onsite extension of Highcroft Drive, which is a collector avenue as identified in the town's comprehensive transportation plan. This design does include a large stream crossing culvert and head walls at the northern crossing of the tributary of Panther Creek, which is this one here. Additionally, we've also worked with town staff to create a functional alignment and design of the portions to the north and south to ensure that the groundwork is laid and that the design is feasible for the full sections of Highcroft in this area. That includes functional design up to tie to the existing portion that comes off of Carpenter Fire Station, as well as to the south to tie to the portion that will be constructed with Friars Gate subdivision. This functional design also includes a large future pedestrian culvert, which is an underpass of Highcroft Drive, which will allow the town to complete the portion of the greenway in this area that will ultimately tie to the future town park. Upon multiple design iterations and buy-in from town staff, the roadway crossing was taken to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer for stream impact permitting under a nationwide 29 permit. Due to the fact that the proposed Highcroft Drive extension would not be connecting to an existing roadway, the improvements are not permissible through the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer, as they said they consider it a road to nowhere. The developer has attended numerous in-person meetings with both Town of Cary and U.S. Army Corps of Engineer staff to discuss and confirm this decision. Because the stream crossing is not permissible through the Corps, it is proposed that the roadway be stopped short of the crossing and a fee in lieu be paid for the remaining improvements, which would take the roadway to the property line. The fee in lieu amount, which has been prepared and assigned sealed engineers' opinion of cost, has been reviewed and approved by town staff, and as I mentioned before, is for $516,700,000 approximately.
At this moment, I'm going to ask Mr. Lovelace to hit pause on his testimony while we call Deborah Shirley of SNEC, who can testify as to the jurisdictional nature of this crossing, as well as her interactions with the Corps on our behalf.
Thank you, Jason. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Deborah Shirley, and I work for St. and Environmental Consultants. I've worked for SNEC for a little over nine years as an environmental specialist. Previous to that, I worked for the North Carolina Department of Environment Natural Resources within the Division of Water Quality for a little over five years. I would consider myself an expert in the field of stream delineations, Section 404 and four-wall permitting. I'm a graduate of UNC Wilmington, where I received a bachelor's degree in environmental studies with a concentration in biology. I was contracted by the applicant to prepare and submit the pre-construction notification applications, requesting permits for wetland and stream impacts for the project. I attended the meetings that Landon referenced in his testimony, and I've had multiple correspondence with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and can confirm that the wetlands and streams in question are in fact jurisdictional, and that the Army Corps of Engineers told us and the town that the stream crossing could not be permitted as proposed because the crossing is unrelated to the proposed Indian Wells development.
Thank you, Deborah. And at this time, I'm going to call Landon back up to continue testifying as to the remaining requirements for approval.
Now I'd like to address the second minor modification request. The applicant includes a request to use a retaining wall in the design of a stormwater pond outside of the mixed-use overlay district. As Kevin mentioned, it's incorrectly numbered on this plan, but it's BMP3. It's a stormwater wet pond. It's up here in the northeast corner. This is a modification that typically is allowable by the planning director, but because we have to come for the fee in lieu request over $100,000, it kicks into the quasi-judicial process. This BMP has been designed to contribute to the aesthetic value of the development, will be graded in landscape to blend with the surrounding landscape, and will not be readily visible from any other location in this development or any future development. The wall design will meet the required criteria set forth in the LDO as follows. The exterior surface of the wall shall consist of split face or modular block. The BMP is located in design such as accessible to the public, especially for the trail connection to the north we are making, and we believe it will be an aesthetic amenity to the site. The design of the wall will be tiered in order to accommodate the plantings installed to soften the mass of the upper half of the wall height, and wall tiers shall not exceed approximately six feet in height and three feet in depth. And the third minor modification request includes the removal of a 33-inch sweet gum. We're proposing to mitigate the removal by upsizing a number of street trees from two inches to three inches to match the caliper inches of the tree being removed. The tree sod for removal is located in an area that conflicts with the improvements that are being made on Seco Ten Trail Drive, as Kevin noted before, is up here in the cul-de-sac in the northeast corner of the site. Based on the existing site constraints, including the low-density zoning, existing topographical and environmental features, as well as the town's roadway design standards, the requested modification is the least deviation required to make compliance practicable, and therefore I believe this minor modification is justified. In addition, the site plan has been modified multiple times in order to successfully retain six of the seven champion trees. We have also modified lots relocating to open space amenity to incorporate one of the safe champion trees as a significant feature required in the community gathering space, which is here. With respect to the findings numbers one through five of the ordinance, I did prepare the applicant's statement portion of the staff report and hereby swear to the contents of those portions of the staff report. Finally, with respect to the remaining DRC comments noted in the staff report, we believe our recent resumé, along with tonight's action, will address those comments.
Thank you, Landon. At this time, Mr. Mayor, I'll call Jessica McClure of Ramey Kempin Associates.
Thank you, Jason. Good evening, Mayor, council. I am Jessica McClure. I'm a traffic engineer with Ramey Kempin Associates out of Raleigh. I have been practicing engineering for seven years, and I graduated from NC State with a master's in civil engineering. I was contacted by the applicant to review the traffic for the site based on the concerns that they had heard. The trip generation for a development of this nature is not significant, but based on those concerns that they heard, the applicant requested that we take a look at the traffic regardless. In the review of the traffic, we recommend that an eastbound right-turn lane be added to Indian Wells Road at the intersection of NC 55. As mentioned earlier, this turn lane would consist of 100 feet of storage and 100 feet of taper. My analysis is contained in the report that Jason will be distributing shortly. This report has been shared with and reviewed by the town's traffic engineering staff. With the addition of this turn lane, which I understand has been offered as a condition by the applicant, the plan provides mitigation for traffic congestion impacts reasonably expected to be generated by this development.
Thank you, Jessica. While that's going around, Mr. Mayor, at this time, I'd like to submit into evidence all of the exhibits that have been provided to you all, including the staff report, as well as the Ramey Kempin Associates report that Jessica just referred to and you all just received. I'd also ask the council to take judicial notice of the contents of the land development ordinance, as well as the other town adopted plans. Again, you know, the two points, there are three points I made at the beginning, three points I do want to reiterate. First, the fee in lieu, we have no option. We're stuck being here. We didn't want to be here in terms of asking for a fee in lieu, but the Corps said no. So we have to come ask you for permission to do what the Corps told us we can. Second, again, it's a sweet gum that's required for removal. And then finally, and I hope I'm not offending any sweet gum aficionados. And then finally, with respect to transportation, again, Kay Hovnanian Homes heard you all loud and clear. They didn't want the council to be concerned that somehow they were taking advantage of a benefit that is not being afforded to other people. And so as part of their traffic study, they were looking for opportunities to improve that intersection. The intersection improvements that are being recommended as part of this case are intersection improvements that will actually take some of the burden off of other zoning applicants in the event those zoning cases are approved. They're essentially consumed within improvements that are being made as part of this, of those zoning cases. So with that, we will conclude our testimony. Our witnesses remain available to answer any questions that the council may have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, one minor housekeeping issue. I apologize, I almost forgot. You all have an updated worksheet in terms of the motions, and on the second page of that includes the specific language of the condition associated with the right-of-way improvement, and that is condition number two on, I guess it's page two of what you've received. It's under the motion to approve the subdivision plan, and it's condition two of that, and that is prior to recordation of the plaque creating the 51st lot within the development, the owner shall construct and install a 100-foot eastbound right-turn lane on Indian Wells Road at its intersection with NC Highway 55, and develop and implement a traffic signal modification plan to accommodate the improvement, including a revised signal phasing and timing plan. Such 100-foot right-turn lane shall include 100 feet of taper, as shown generally on the attached Exhibit One. And again, you all have an exhibit that depicts the manner in which these improvements are contemplated to be made. We consulted with the transportation staff so that they were aware of what our wording was, and they provided some comments, and that is the condition that's before you. With respect to, I did want to explain, with respect to the 51st lot, my client is just concerned that they're going to move faster than DOT will in terms of approving it. So essentially, what they, they don't want to have to be held up at the very front end of the process in terms of as they proceed with lots. So by the time the 51st lot gets platted, not permitted, platted, those improvements will be in. So I just wanted you all to be clear as to why that was included in that condition. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, I'll invite other speakers who have been sworn in and willing to speak in support of the application to approach the podium. Any speakers in support? Seeing none, I'll invite cross-examination of the witnesses who testified in support of the requests. None? We'll open up now the hearing for those who are opposed to the request. Anyone opposed that would like to speak? Seeing no one, we'll move ahead. Calling the town staff for any testimony they wish to add.
Thank you, council. Again, staff will provide just a few professional observations focusing primarily on the modification request being made by the applicant. At this time, I'll turn the podium over to Mr. Jensen with the Transportation and Facilities Department to discuss the payment in lieu for Highcroft Drive.
Thank you, Kevin. Good evening, council. The slide in front of you tonight is a compilation of many of the rezoning cases that have come to you in the last six months to a year. Many of these are still active pending zoning cases. What the map also shows is the extension of Highcroft Drive, shown in blue. Outside of the rezoning cases that you see that are in colored, there's approximately 1,800 feet of Highcroft Drive that's not committed to any rezoning case, so there is still quite a bit of land that that road still traverses through. Want to make you aware of that. A second point I want to make you aware of is that the town does not have any funds committed in our capital improvement project for Highcroft Drive, so I want to make you aware of that as well. Regarding the partial payment in lieu that the applicant is requesting, that generally represents the full cost of design and construction for approximately 150 feet of Highcroft Drive and all the elements included, including the culvert, pedestrian, street-side trail, and actual the roadway itself. The amount of the fee in lieu estimate is based on today's dollar values, so it does not take into account future-year dollars if it's built in future years. The developer will be dedicating all the necessary right-of-way and construction easements for the future construction of this roadway whenever it's completed. Staff also was present with the applicant and their environmental consultant in meeting with the Corps of Engineers late last fall. We do concur with some of the testimony that was provided by Ms. Shirley, that the Corps does have some strong opinions about not actually approving this permit until they can provide some logical termini, which in their words is basically, "We need to get the road to Carpenter Fire Station Road to a logical place of terminus before they would, they would act on that particular permit application." So I want to make you aware of that as well. And finally, I wanted to provide our staff's observation that the partial payment in lieu seems reasonable and advances the transportation elements in our comprehensive transportation plan and our land development ordinance, and will, this particular roadway extension will be needed in the future for the public. And that's all I have, and I'm going to turn that back to Kevin. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. Moving on to the next minor modification, B, is a proposed modular retaining wall we mentioned earlier in BMP wet pond number three. That BMP, as Landon, Mr. Lovelace indicated in his presentation, is located behind four residential lots in the northern portion of the development. It is not adjacent to any roadways and is generally not accessible to the public, though it is adjacent to the proposed private connection, trail connection to the park site and future greenway corridor. The wall would be sandstone-colored, the typical tan, and is actually at its highest .7 feet in height. However, that is measured to the foundation of the wall, to the top. Four feet of that would be under the permanent pool elevation of the BMP itself, so there would only be three feet visible above the surface of the BMP. Moving on to the third minor modification request is the removal of the champion tree number 35. As mentioned earlier, it is a low-tier-for-preservation priority on the site, being a sweet gum less than 40 inches in diameter and not adjacent to any other significant vegetation. In order to save that tree, they would need to shorten or eliminate the cul-de-sac, which would obviously impact the yield of the property. That is not a required cul-de-sac. It is a design choice on the part of the applicant. However, they have made significant changes to the site to try and save the other champion trees, six of the seven champion trees onsite. Four of those would be in common open space. The highest tier for preservation would be the grouping of three, which is located in common open space adjacent to BMP number one, as well as making changes to the site to save champion tree number 483, which is a 37-inch white oak and classified as a higher tier for preservation than the sweet gum mentioned before. The other two champion trees would be retained on the rear of lots. They're located very close to the property line. There was no real good way to provide common open space to save those. So that concludes staff's observations at this time. This is your, the modification summary table, which summarizes the observations Mr. Jensen and myself just provided. Following deliberation, council should remind council to take action on the annexation prior to taking action on the modifications and the subdivision plan itself, as well as I mentioned, in addition to the conditions included in the motions prepared for you before the meeting, just to make it clear to the applicant, we've discussed this with Mr. Barron, we'd like to propose adding a condition that simply reminds them or clarifies that they will need to close a portion of right-of-way for Indian Wells Road where the lots are going to be created, if indeed it's fee simple right-of-way. There's a little discrepancy between what Wayne County property map show at the moment and what NC DOD considers the actual right-of-way. So that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Can you explain what you just said?
Yes. This actually shows it very well. This is the existing lot line. This is the existing lot line for Indian Wells Road. Wake County's property data shows that as fee simple right-of-way, meaning it was dedicated to the state. The state does not necessarily concur with Wake County's property data at the moment. It may be an access easement over the property, and that right-of-way may not exist as fee simple, so it would not therefore need to be abandoned.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd invite any cross-examination of town's witnesses. No? Okay. Ask anyone who's been sworn in if they have any objections to the competency of any evidence or testimony. Does either party believe there's evidence presented that warrants a continuance of this hearing? Nope? All right, now's the time for the deliberative phase of the hearing, and we'll go and open it up to council members for questions or comments, but I want to start.
Never start.
I want to ask Mr. Jensen to come up, because he pretty much answered my question. I just want to restate what he said about Highcroft Drive to make sure I really did understand what I thought you said. So it's my understanding that if Highcroft Drive came from the north and stopped at the property line, that it would be likely that the Corps of Engineers would have allowed that stream crossing, but since there is no roads north or south, they're saying, "No, we're not going to allow that at this time."
Correct. There are two things as part of a well and permit application you have to show. First, you have to show a purpose, which basically means that the subdivision had to, needed Highcroft Drive as access to the property, and in fact, they don't need it. They could use Indian Wells Drive for that. The other thing they need to do is they need to show avoidance and minimization. Because the road didn't connect, Highcroft Drive didn't connect to another road, there was no logical termini where it would connect to, so in their viewpoint, there's no logical terminus. They couldn't advance the permit application.
And I asked those questions to get clarification, because I wanted to make sure that it is likely in the future, once Highcroft Drive is built, they will allow the crossing. They're not going to say, "No, you're never going to cross."
In our, my understanding with the Corps is, yes, if there is certainty that the road is going to connect to a logical terminus like Carpenter Fire Station Road, it would be a permissible type crossing as it's configured now.
Okay. Very good. And then the other concern, or the other mitigations that we're looking at, one was the wall. I thought I heard that it was tiered, three feet between tiered, and nothing's higher, or the total height is no bigger than seven feet? Is that what I heard?
Correct. The ODO actually says the wall tier should be no more than six feet high and with a three-foot space in between the tiers to provide a planting strip. This wall is actually seven feet in height if you measure the actual height of the wall. However, only three feet of it is visible above the permanent pool elevation of the BMP. Since it's a wet pond, it's got water standing in it, four foot of the wall is actually under the water. So therefore, they did not break the seven foot into a six-foot or one-foot or two, three-foot tiers.
Good. And the sweet gum?
Don't care.
Bless you. Please cut that thing. Okay, so I've stated my thoughts. Open it up to the rest of council.
I only have one question. When I first saw, can you bring up the subdivision plan again? Picture. When I first saw this, I thought, "Well, why doesn't Indian Wells go straight to Highcroft?" I just thought it made a natural, I don't know, I guess I really like the matrix kind of subdivisions, right?
Grids?
Yeah, grids. I like grids rather than the circuitous route. But then I realized that the other side is Carpenter, or Mooresville Carpenter, right, on the other side of 55, and I also realized that this neighborhood probably doesn't want people driving through as a route. If they're going to do it, they're probably more likely to go up to Carpenter Fire Station and come down. So that was my first inclination that made me kind of question the way it looked. I see exactly this line of Indian Wells, and it looks like it's just going to be natural to go straight to Highcroft. I was wondering if the applicant thought about that. Why did they create this? But I, it looks like you dead-end into the subdivision, basically, rather than pass through to the collector. Because, and also, just from a staff perspective, what is the classification of Indian Wells Road? Highcroft's a collector. What is Indian Wells? We have a slide.
Zoom out a little bit more. Indian Wells, a portion of Indian Wells is considered a collector. The light blue line you see here is, it is classified as a collector in the CTP up into the point where it intersects Waukeahna Road. The collector then turns and runs down Waukeahna to connect to Highcroft at the south. So the portion you're looking at past the Waukeahna Road intersection and into the subdivision itself is actually a local street.
Oh, sorry. That answers my question then. So because it's not a collector, you determined, you made the determination to keep it a subdivision-type road?
That is, that's what I was.
Okay, thank you for showing me that.
Other questions, comments? Mr. Yurhah?
Just a comment. I have nothing against sweet gums like the rest of you.
That's because you don't have one.
I guess not. I wouldn't know if I did. Normally, would not like something like this where it's, the tree's being removed because of a design feature, the way they're designing the cul-de-sac. It's not a required thing. It's not in, you know, in the way as we normally see these things. But because they are saving six of the other seven, and I, to me, it looks like they're designing, really, this whole subdivision in a very environmentally responsible way, except for this tree. I'm not going to let that stand in my way. I'm not just going to approve it because it's only a sweet gum.
Okay. Other comments?
I think it's a very nice subdivision plan. I like the fact that they had the strips of trees around there. I mean, I think they would have saved that tree if it was at all feasible. It's, it is very attractive.
I know some information was presented on the density, two units an acre. I'm just curious how big the lot sizes were, especially the smallest lot size, because I know I'll be asked that question. That's why I ask.
I'll call Mr. Lovelace, because I don't have that at my fingertips.
And if you don't know exactly, an approximation would be great.
I was going to say, unfortunately, I don't know exactly either. Based on the zoning, the minimum lot size is 8,000. We're above that. We're, I think, 88 maybe is the minimum. The average is probably in the nine and a half thousand or so.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Are we ready to walk through motions? Reminding everyone, we have to do the annexation first?
Make a motion to approve annexation 14A11.
A second?
There's a motion and a second. Yes, sir.
14A19.
Mine says 11.
All right, hold on.
It's 19, as they are evidently on the motion sheet.
Yeah, it's 19 on the agenda.
Mr. Franz, will you please restate your motion?
Okay, I make a motion to approve annexation 14A19.
There's a motion. Ms. Bush?
A second?
Second, that one. Discussion on the annexation. All in favor of the annexation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Would you like to continue, Mr. Franz?
For the reasons discussed, I move that we approve the modification request made by the applicant, as the requests meet all of the approval criteria of the applicable sections of the LDO.
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Does that cover the additional?
Additional conditions will be on the subdivision.
Okay, want to make sure. Other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And for the reasons discussed, I move that we approve the proposed subdivision plan with conditions as stated below. As it meets all of the approval criteria set forth in Section 3.9.2I of the LDO, this approval is conditioned upon the following: that the applicant must satisfactorily address all remaining development review committee comments on the master plan set submitted for signature. Prior to recordation, never heard that one, of the plaque creating the 51st lot within the development, the owner shall construct and install 100-foot eastbound right turn lane on Indian Wells Road at its intersection with NC Highway 55, and develop and implement a traffic signal modification plan to accommodate the improvement, including a revised signal phasing and timing plan. Such 100-foot right turn lane shall include 100 foot of taper as shown generally on the attached Exhibit 1.
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion?
I just want to make a comment and thank the developer and all of the people that worked here. This was not a requirement for you to add this condition, and I was, I am very thankful that you worked so hard to make this a process and something that all of our citizens are really going to enjoy, because it was much needed.
Other comments? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And unless there's anything left or any objection, I'll close this public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Hales.
Thank you.
Our last quasi-judicial public hearing is for Iglesia Cristina de Carey. Mr. Franz, I understand you have a disclosure to make before we begin.
I have been asked by the town attorney's office to recuse myself from this discussion as I am an adjacent property owner to the proposal. I understand that there are concerns regarding my participation in this discussion and to not cause any, you know, bad perceptions or anything. I think we all feel it best that I recuse myself from this and ask for council to recuse me.
Okay. Is there a motion to recuse Mr. Franz from considering this matter?
So moved.
There's a motion.
A second.
And a second. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And I understand that the applicant would like to request a continuance of this matter. Would the attorney for the applicant, please come forward at this time?
Good evening, Mayor Weinberg, town council, members of staff, Mr. Silverstein. I'm Bob Brady, attorney for the applicant, Iglesia Cristiana de Carey. They're seeking special use permit and site plan approval for a Hispanic church to be located on Chatham Street. One of the critical components of this request requires some ancillary parking arrangements with adjacent property owners, and we have run into a last-minute issue that needs to be resolved desperately to allow us to make a more efficient presentation to the council. Pursuant to Policy Statement 167, Section 3, I have requested that to the staff member in charge, Mr. Douglas Loveland, and would ask the town to grant us the continuance that we're requesting to the next available session for the council.
Thank you. Does staff have any comments to?
We've been discussing timing internally with folks about when to bring this back, and I know there have been discussions about your April 2 meeting that you all have reserved on your calendars and what might be taking place that evening. It's my understanding, and the manager's office can correct me, that April 2 could be used to have this quasi-judicial hearing. It is set aside for quasi-judicial hearings. We don't have any others scheduled to come before you in April, so this would be the only matter on for that evening, and then the manager's office may wish to schedule you for something else that evening as well, I understand. So if you're so inclined, then your motion could be, if you would like to approve this, to continue the case to your April 2 meeting at 6:30 p.m. That way, we won't have to re-advertise and re-notice for this hearing.
Okay, very good. Is there a motion to do such a thing?
So moved. Yes, so moved.
So we have a motion and a second to continue this public hearing until 6:30 on April the 2nd. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And based on that, I think that concludes our business for the evening. Mr. Silverstein, have I left anything undone?
Do we? No, he doesn't have to.
Okay.
If everything's in order, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. You can pretty much pick anybody. I think everybody said it. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Okay, can you?